Thirty seconds, so you tell me when you're ready. Terrence's microphone's working too.
Check one, two, mic check.
Revert.
Red Sox already won today, too.
Yes, they did. Five to two.
Oh yeah, they was there, because they must be traveling, right?
Yeah, traveling to Seattle.
They're going to Seattle tonight, they're going to meet Cheryl.
They're going to Seattle?
They heard I was going.
Ready, Katie?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna open the meeting now, and if anyone could stand and join us for the Pledge Allegiance, we'll start that way as always. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice brought. Thank you. You remember this one, the Coast Guard Museum?
Oh, that must be exciting.
Yeah, I'm excited.
I think there's one in halt, too. Well, that's the exit museum.
Good evening. I think the first question has been, please take a moment and introduce yourself, but I think we can skip number one and move on to number two, and basically the part of number, the second question that we've asked everybody. Andrew is, obviously, well, before we get to, obviously, we're, this is being taped and broadcast, and so that's just so everybody knows. Pertinent part of question number two, which we've asked everybody, is why do you believe you're the best candidate for the TA position in the town of Maynard?
The whole question is, why did you make the decision to apply?
Sure. Well, I'll start by saying thank you for having me here tonight. I am excited for this opportunity. The, you know, I came here four and a half years ago and didn't expect to have this opportunity. But I saw it as a great opportunity to learn more about being a town administrator, because it is one of my career goals. When there was a vacancy here, it was an automatic decision for me that I was interested in this. I've grown to love this community. There's some good bones about it, some incredible things happening with the people in this town, the passion they have for the community. And it's the type of community people in my profession want to work for. There's a lot going on here, it's an exciting community. So those are the things that led me to say, I'm gonna apply, I wanna, I wanna a piece of this. To answer your question about why I feel qualified, I've spent 25 years in public administration and in a wide range of different opportunities. I worked in education, public safety, facility management, information technology, and then here as an ATA, working in pretty much every department in the building. This has provided me with this generalist background. I know a little bit about all these departments, and it enables me to work expediently with, say, the finance team or the municipal services folks, because I know enough about what they're doing to ask good questions and to move processes along. And I can also, I know enough about myself to know that they're more expert than me in many of those areas, and I can rely on them for that expertise when I'm in over my head about, say, how the water department works. But not everybody that will come before you has that wide-ranging background. Some of it's my years of experience, and some of it is that career of opportunities in all these different places I've been. I think that's a special attribute, and a necessary one for a town administrator, to have a generalist background. I can give you some examples of how that can readily help, if you'd like to hear.
You know, is there, you know, as you reflect back in your role as ATA here in Maynard, is there kind of a specific element of the town administrator role that you would see as a stretch, or that you kind of would particularly relish as a transition?
I'd have to say the stretch is assessing. And I think everybody in the world will tell you that it's a real mystery how that works. And I'm definitely one of those people. I've had it explained to me, I've attended workshops, I've tried to understand it. And it's really magical sometimes what, what an assessor goes through to set a tax rate. That is, again, one of those areas where I can rely on the expertise of the assessor. In terms of what I really enjoy doing, I enjoy the collective bargaining process and the financial management. And the two are directly related, because of course, about 80% of our budget is salaries. But I enjoy the give and take of negotiation and figuring out where the wins are for both sides. And on financial management, it just threads through all the different departments that way. There's, perhaps there's a piece of something happening in one department that can help another department. And tying those two things together for the betterment of them makes the finances stretch a little further.
My follow-up, Andrew, would be, with your time here in Maynard, working on collective bargaining, what lessons have you learned? How have you grown in that role in your negotiating collective bargains? What's changed since when you first got here, from your first, the first time you sat at the table, to when, just last week, when you might have sat for the last time on a, on a collective bargaining?
Wrapping up two of them in one week. So, I didn't come here without, with no experience in collective bargaining, but I had never been the lead of it at the table. I'd always been sort of the behind-the-scenes person, working with others in the organizations I was with. So I knew what I wanted to accomplish, and having done this in a similar community, a little bit larger, but I knew firsthand that you are working with these people. They're not just a group of people, like a large city would have, where the negotiating team doesn't even know the names and faces. Working with these people literally every day, in the same building or throughout the community, changes how you negotiate. You know, you work with them today, you negotiate with them tonight, you're working with them again tomorrow. And it, it creates a different decorum. One of the things I tell all the people when we start the negotiations is, we're on the same team. It's not an us versus them. And I'm always looking for wins in that process. The first year or so, the negotiations, you know, were a learning curve for both sides. We had legal counsel in the room to help guide us through. Now we use legal counsel, but we don't bring them in. We just do it conversationally on the phone or email, and only bring them in if necessary. But that was what I learned. I learned that process and how to build that relationship with that union starts even before you get to the table, and then, you know, proceeds through the process. There were hiccups along the way. I had one negotiation which had three different union teams negotiating the contract over the course of about a year. That's very difficult. They're, they're changing riders every few months, trip things up. But for the most part, it was working collegially to find a solution for everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else? The next question has read, reads, "There is a natural tension between owning the day-to-day operations of the town as the TA and deferring to the priorities, guidance, and direction of the Board of Selectmen. Please tell us how you, how you approach this and provide examples of how you've navigated this in the past."
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you mean by "natural tension," but I'll take a stab at it, and you can ask me if I cover it or not.
Well, I mean, let me, let me explain to the natural tension. You sit in these meetings, you're at these meetings, you can watch the tapes of these meetings, and you don't think there's a tension back and forth at times?
I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood. It's not between the day-to-day and the, it's the Board of Selectmen relationship to my role, I understand.
The role of the TA versus the role of a board.
The whole TA versus, you know, what we're doing as opposed to what sometimes the TA, whether it's you or Kevin or whoever else, the, you know, the desires of those of us that have, sit here and are sitting here versus some of the goals and wants of people that sit typically where Becky's sitting. That's, that's where the tension is.
Fair enough.
And then we've described it for some of the other applicants, was sort of that element of, you know, as a town administrator, you've got a day-to-day responsibility, being in the building, things coming in, out. You have a Board of Selectmen that has the authority of the executive branch that may not meet as regularly. So there's that element of balance.
Yeah, the tension, I think, comes from, you know, an experienced person like myself wanting to do things, make some progress, oh, I know what the decision is, I'm, you know, just let me do this, give me, give me the authority to do this. That would definitely create the tension. There's a lot of good examples of this. The day-to-day is easy. If you guys are hearing about day-to-day issues in Town Hall from anybody but, say, the town administrator or, you know, other members of the staff here, it's because it's a problem. You're getting a call about, you know, my trash didn't get picked up, or there's a sewage truck leaking throughout the town. I don't know if you guys heard about that, the chairman has, because that's one of those sort of day-to-day things that we deal with. But it was a significant enough one tonight that I wanted to make sure that the chairman knew about it. It's not a daily occurrence, but it's a day-to-day routine thing that we manage. Those things don't create any tension in my eyes. It's a matter of making sure we communicate what needs to be communicated in a timely way. At last board meeting, there were two items on the agenda that I was asking for guidance on. So one was putting forth a public meeting for a powder mill place, and the other was establishing our marijuana regulations. I need the guidance of the board to move those things forward. I have an opinion about moving them forward, whether it's the right time, or whether I know that this is the version of the document I want to have signed, and so on. But it's your decision, and the board's decision was to wait on both of those issues. So, something like that might create some temporary tension, like, oh, I was really hoping this would happen tonight. But the TA is here to advise, make recommendations on best practices, options for the, the board, to help them align them to the community values, and then to step back and let the board make that decision. And that shouldn't create any tension in terms of the relationship. It's a decision the board makes, and the TA accepts it and goes in the direction recommended by the board.
Your turn, Cheryl.
My favorite questions.
Yeah, your favorite, two questions.
My moment in the sun. So, Maynard as a community has an admittedly high tax base, and our size limits our new growth potential. These factors, as well as the constant reduction in state funding, contribute to an annual struggle to retain full services while balancing our budget. What financial strategies would you employ to retain high service levels while maintaining a balanced budget?
So, I think there's a couple of challenges here. We have to define high service levels, and I know what you're asking, but the, in, in setting the expectation that we're going to maintain certain services without a corresponding increase in costs that are inevitable, something's gonna get lost. Services may get reduced. So understanding what is expected is important. A good example of this is about three or four years ago, we implemented an electronic permitting for our building department. And prior to the electronic process, contractors came into Town Hall, typically around 7:00 in the morning, started pulling permits, going about and doing their work, and the inspectors would get their permit notifications and go out and do their inspections. There's a lot of paperwork, there was time, time issues for the staff. Checks that were getting bounced by some of the contractors. It was just all kind of a bad process. By making it electronic, it's now available 24/7. The permits get approved if they're fairly routine and they're paid for. It's pretty much an automatic process. Some that need review are reviewed that day or the next day by the building commissioner or the plumbing inspector, whomever is required to do it. It's all online, the money comes in, it's with credit cards, so we're not getting bounced checks, that sort of thing. And there's nobody coming into the office, so the staff that remains there is now able to work on the projects that they're working on, instead of teaching someone how to fill out a form or trying to decipher the handwriting, handwriting on a handwritten permit application, and slowing down the wheels of that process. In that time, I think if you talk to our local developers and contractors, you'll find that most of them are thrilled with this. Everything seems to be better in that regard. So, we were asked four years ago to improve our, the way we interact with our local businesses, and this is one of those areas we can say we won, that we were doing a really great job with that, saving time, saving money, and so on. It costs $14,000 a year, and that money comes from an increase in the permit fee. So, from the way we used to do it to the way we do it now, there's no change in the town's budget for that process to be a higher efficient, better service. So there's an example. It's a really tiny, tiny part of this $40 million budget, though. So, we are not gonna be able to find efficiencies like that across the town that are gonna save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. We need to make decisions about reducing services, doing, doing less with less, right? Instead of trying to do more with less. Those are hard decisions for the town, for the board. But I do, I'm a little more hopeful than that sounds. I do think there are more efficiencies. We can provide 24/7 service, like the e-permitting in some of our other departments. That's a service enhancement. And as in that e-permitting example, it doesn't need to come at a huge increased cost to provide that benefit to the community. And then the other part of your conversation has to do with identifying more revenue. There's still more revenue in this town, it's gonna require good planning and growth. The community needs to embrace growth and not be afraid of redevelopment and infill development and so on. We're not gonna become a overcrowded megalopolis, but that added growth with our confined community is gonna create an economy of scale that I believe will correct that imbalance that you referenced about the high tax rate. It's gonna take a generation as well, this isn't two years to resolve.
Just wanna follow up one bit, because you've used this phrase before, and I'm not suggesting it's wrong or whatever. I just wanna get some clarification. When you say doing less with less, rather than doing more with less, what's an example of what we can do less?
So that's, that's a great question, right? What are we doing that we don't need to do any longer? And that's, that's a job for the manager in every department and right up to the TA's role, to be analyzing on a regular basis. State laws change, federal laws change. We often feel like we have these unfunded mandates, these new things are coming down the road that we have to deal with. A great example of that is, the town clerk has to do voting for like two weeks before an election, early voting, they call it. There's a cost to the community for that, and an impact cost. So that's one of those unfunded mandates, we'll call it, right? Well, there's often the opposite of that. When they've put in this new law, they've also changed something else, something else is going away. Bureaucracies, the negative way we talk about government, often forgets to eliminate those things. And going through the community and finding those areas to prune out those unnecessary processes is something that needs to get done on a regular basis. Great example is, again, using the e-permitting. We still, by state law, have to maintain our manual process for e-permitting, for permitting, because we cannot force people to do it on the online system. Now, something like 99% of our permits are issued that way, there's a couple of holdouts, if you will. Rather than keep photocopying and making more and more copies of, of all the forms for this, for these occasional permits that get pulled, our staff sits with the contractor and puts it into the system. Takes them maybe 10 minutes or something, but it's more efficient and effective than maintaining a whole bunch of processes that are gonna be rarely used and may, may not even keep up with changes we make to the permitting software. So it's pruning those things on a regular basis that creates a little bit more efficiency as well.
Can you think of something in your four and a half years here, or in the time that you've been the acting TA, that you think you might address efficiency on immediately? Something that you observe that you think is, is the process just doesn't work? Or isn't, isn't working as efficiently as it could be?
I think we have a physical problem in this building in the way it's laid out that has created a problem that I think can be solved, that addresses this. I, I believe we have a lot of offices with employees who are, say, 90% busy. Now, there's always peaks at times, but there's also little troughs. And if we had a bullpen, they call it, where all the clerical staff, for instance, were in one office, they could share, cross-train, provide coverage when people are out, and be more efficient. Instead, because we have all of these offices in different locations in the building, if someone's out, sometimes those offices actually close up. We don't have anybody to staff it on a particular day. It's not, it's not frequent, but it does happen. But with a different business model, David, we might find some cross-training opportunities and some efficiencies within the staff that aren't evident in the way it's designed now. Of course, we'd have to spend, you know, a couple million dollars on a new building.
Didn't we just rework this whole building and shuffle people all throughout this building to solve their very problem?
I would say it was a first step. Solving it would require much more dramatic changes than, than that one that we did. But we did that in order to create some of that efficiency. For instance, DPW and OMS downstairs have the same issue, two separate offices, a lot of overlapping types of work, very similar types of work. Starting July 1st, we're only gonna have one clerk in OMS. That person's gonna take vacation, be out sick occasionally. We may not have office coverage for that office in that, on those days. We have an employee in the DPW who used to work in OMS, knows most of the systems. We should be able to provide some sort of coverage on those types of circumstances. That's the type of efficiency I'm talking about. Rather than saying, the only solution is to hire another employee. That's, that's not the only solution to some of these things.
So Andrew, to follow up on that, with regards to your experience here intimately with the town, the staff, situations that we find ourselves in, and sort of the scenarios you just described, do you have an example of how you would go about implementing something like a cross-training? Because my understanding is you're dealing with different unions now as well, too, right? And roles, responsibilities of those workers who may be unionized. And so, I wouldn't ask this question of any of the other candidates, because they don't have the experience of being here and, and actually participating in this. But what's your observation? How would you go about enabling cross-training from that perspective? Would it simply be to create a location where several employees would work? And sort of by osmosis, they, they'd hear each other talk and work, and they'd sort of pick it up? Or have you, have you specked out a plan to actually try to do something to actually make what you're talking about actually come to fruition?
So, two parts to this. The, the first part is, the employees that we're talking about in this specific example are all in the same union. So that does create a little bit of an easier structure for that. There are different job descriptions within that union, and so sometimes there can be incompatibilities. But for the most part, we're talking about employees within a union that are all the same job title, and cross-training is just a job assignment, a management prerogative. The second part's a little more complicated, and it requires buy-in of department heads and a little bit of effort. And frankly, there's a, the office consolidation that the chairman mentioned a moment ago has not been taken to its logical conclusion. There's been some cross-training, but not enough. Part of that is a matter of employee buy-in. It's been sort of backburnered, in part because of the turnover at the top that we've experienced this winter and spring. But it's on the agenda for, you know, it needs to be addressed. I intend to address it. I assume, you know, assuming they have an opportunity, Terrence, it's not something I would ignore. Similar to that one downstairs, that conversation I've actually already had with the DPW director and myself, because I also supervise the municipal services group, and that is working. We're already providing summer vacation coverage in the way I described. So we're trying to build towards that without having to change everything else about the building. One limitation to this as well, the treasury, we looked into this before we made this office swap we made last year on the first floor. We looked into this in a different manner. And one of the limitations was that the treasury employees need to be specially bonded because of the amount of money they handle and the way they handle it. So merging all of those people into one bullpen, as I was describing earlier, wasn't going to work with this particular cohort of people. And that led us to a different office configuration. We were gonna put everybody on the east wing and have them all work together, but we were gonna see things change with insurance costs and bonding. It would skyrocket. The more people that touch the money, the higher your insurance rates are. It's not a linear equation, it's exponentially, because more hands is more risk. So we went away from that model to the one we have. Perhaps a little less efficient in the staffing level, but more efficient on that other side.
One last follow-up on this, on this topic you opened up. So, in all candidness, how much of this redesign of Town Hall was your idea versus following the lead of the former town administrator?
So we went through about eight or nine months of spitballing between Aaron McClosco, this actually started when he was still the facilities manager, Kevin Sweet and myself. We talked to department heads about this off and on. There were, there was a lot of ideas sort of thrown out there, what if, what if, what if? After about, I don't remember how long, but let's say it was about a year ago, last April or so, we came up with what we felt was the best, most efficient, most effective plan. And then we nurtured that out to the, a level of detail and presented it to the staff in June of last year. We implemented it in the fall. So from last June, when we sort of nailed it down until the fall, we fine-tuned it. It's hard for me to say exactly how much it was my idea versus, say, Kevin Sweet's or Aaron's. I would say we all added something to make it a better plan. I would say I was driving more of the, we need to change something, we need to find a way to be more effective and efficient. I think, you know, to a certain extent, it wasn't as high a priority for some of the other folks.
Thank you.
So the next question is, as you'll be familiar with, recently, the Board of Selectmen unveiled a strategy for a more disciplined approach to budgeting and financial planning that would help us set aside money for capital projects and which will require a high degree of discipline and restraint in the face of budgetary needs and asks. Do you have thoughts on this proposed strategy? Some of the challenges the town might face maintaining the approach, and how you might navigate the process? And then the follow-up to that is, you know, who might you invite into the process, such as the schools and other departments, as they all seek to obtain the same dollars?
I presume you're talking about the joint FinCom School Board, Board of Selectmen meetings that started last fall, I believe?
Yeah, and also some of the discussion that surrounded Article 17 at Town Meeting.
Okay. So, I am all in favor of a lot more of this. I believe, I was very happy when Don Rowe asked to have those joint meetings and started to arrange them with the Selectmen and the school committee. The, I think we should be doing them year-round, you know, perhaps quarterly, perhaps every other month. But they should probably start in the summertime and continue through the budget, the start of the budget season on a regular basis, so that that group of people, all community, all residents, all people invested in the community, move the process forward until we get to the town administrator, the town administration saying, here's what, here's what the budget might look like based on revenue estimates and so on. Because what they're gonna be talking about is all the values. And those are things that I think might have been missing from some of the conversations that took place starting last February at some of the budget meetings. There's a, there's a disconnect, I think, between, this is how much money we have, and this is what we prefer to spend it on. And so, without connecting the values and the interest in what the community wants to do with their money, it often winds up being contractual increases plus, you know, modest expense increases. And that, to me, isn't budget planning. That's sort of just kicking the can down the road and, you know, hoping the money comes in the next year. That group meeting, let's say, in July and August and September, can set a tone- That group meeting, let's say in July and August and September, can set a tone and a direction. That can inform the budget process through the fall and winter. And I think we've come out at the February joint budget meeting with a stronger philosophically grounded budget. Having all those people in the room and a few other probably key stakeholders from the community. There's a few folks that have something to tell us, but I think that's the right group for starters. The finance team within Town Hall should be part of that as well. Not sure if I answered the entire question.
I'd say as a follow-up, so then, you know, kind of thinking a bit more around, you know, some of the components. And again, your having been party to some of these discussions allows us to go into a bit greater detail than we can with other candidates. You know, the whole, the notion that we had looking at like funding large-scale capital projects like the fire station. And introducing a, a sustained level of rigor and discipline when it comes to thinking about, you know, what we would, how we would set aside new growth dollars. To try and protect our financing for that. At the same time, as, as you know, from being closely involved with the budgetary process in the past for the town. There's always sort of that rapid grab, you know, as new growth becomes available for urgent needs, et cetera. So we, we know that even as we've unveiled this, we've set ourselves up for a very kind of complex and involved process. That's going to require a lot of negotiation and buy-in. You know, how would you see that kind of moving forward if some of the, you know, anticipated things that we see unfolding over the next one to two to three years happen? How we continue to maintain that level of discipline and rigor?
Sure. So I'm glad you brought that up and those phrases of discipline and rigor are a big part of this. This group and folks that have come to the budget meetings for the past five Februaries that I've been here. Have heard me talk about doing just that with capital planning. That's been my repeated message. We have to start setting aside more money for this because these projects are here or they're right on the horizon and they're expensive. And the money we start setting aside today is also there tomorrow because of the way our budgets roll forward. And that's just good, smart, disciplined, conservative budgeting. It hasn't gotten a lot of traction and it's no one's fault. It's that value statement. We've had, we've had these other competing and other equally or greater importance events for the community. And the money has flowed in that direction. But I'm a strong proponent that we need to establish that discipline. Corral that foundational infrastructure type spending. And in the long-term, that's good for the community because it will be less expensive doing it that way in the long run than through borrowing. And I believe a lot of our high tax rate and a lot of our, what I consider our financial problems. And we're not, you know, we're not destitute, we're not in receivership, but we have a lot of financial challenges in front of us. But I believe they're because we didn't do the disciplined rigorous approach. So huge advocate for this.
Do you think that a formal policy relative to budget, budget approaches? Is more likely to be successful than just going with the annual what hits us next? And then the question is if you, if we were to establish a policy, how do we assure that that policy gets adhered to? When somebody walks into the room and says, but we're going to have to cut five teachers?
So, um, there's two parts to this. I'm, I'm all for this policy stuff and you may have heard that the finance director and I are working on policies. They're essentially ready to be introduced. I would like to have FinCom and other people look at them before they go public. But we've established a set of baseline policies and procedures for the finance department. It includes some of that type of discipline and rigor. But the key to the policies is that they're not laws. And there will be things that happen in this community where the Board of Selectmen or the FinCom or others say, hey, this is really important, we need to change course. The policies and procedures can establish that discipline and rigor we were talking about. But the board should always be conscious of the fact that things change and we need to make a different decision. And not be afraid to violate that policy, if you will, or set it aside for this budget season or for next budget season, but go back to it in the future. That, that again is, is responsible. There's always something that's more important, but if you've got that foundation of discipline, you'll get there in the long run.
Andrew, if I may, with regard to, you know, talking about budgetary constraints and, and you had mentioned things about maybe doing things differently. You, you really can't be afraid to try, you know, to, you don't want to have low service with low levels, right? You want to have higher service with the lowest expense you can possibly have. But within that, you know, how do you, as the leader of the town, as a town administrator, how do you go into a contract negotiation with, with a union? I'm, I'm looking for your point of view personally, thinking about doing things differently. Because my feeling is, we automatically assume that because something happened previous in a precedent. That everyone is due an automatic raise, even though revenues in the town may be trending downward and not be able to support that. So when you go into an agreement, you know, session that you're going to have with a, with a union, for example. How does that message come across about the townspeople don't want to raise taxes? The townspeople understand the challenges they're in, you know? Union collective bargaining specifically usually has typical raises built in over a three-year period, right? And, you know, for the most part, for, maybe not always, but more. How do you as a leader now interject a change to that? How do you negotiate or talk to people on the other side about changes that the town has to make with finances? That may not be popular, for example, like we may not have the money to give a raise to unions for the next three years. How do those, those, I'm interested from a leadership perspective, how do those things come into your mind? And how would you resonate giving that message to, to your counterparts across the table? I'm not saying it's going to happen, but you have to at least think that, that we're not going to have the money.
Absolutely, and those are part of the conversations that start in those first meetings is, you know, it's very, one of the things in, by policy, by, by practice. We never budget for salary increases for a union that we're negotiating with. Because we don't want to, you know, you don't want to tip your hand, so to speak. But you also don't want to say, well, we only have, you know, one percent in the budget, so that's all you're going to get. That would be considered unfair bargaining. So we don't budget anything and then we figure out how we're going to pay for it after the fact, right? But that creates a, a, a fair marketplace for that negotiation to take place. The unions are well aware of what our new growth is and, and what our taxable revenue streams are. And they're also well aware of inflation, national, regional. And they have a right to say, hey, it's getting more expensive for my health insurance, it's getting more expensive for my groceries. You're asking me to do this work, but it's going to cost you more for me to do it. That's what the negotiation's about. It's, the town cannot just say, we can't afford you, so you're not getting a raise. That's just not a realistic negotiation strategy. We could say, we can afford to pay you this much, but there's going to be fewer of you here next year as a result. Because we can only afford this many of you instead of that many. And that is part of the negotiation. One of the things that in the first set of negotiations I did, so there, there's, some of them are two-year contracts, some of them three-year, most of them three-year. But I've been through all of the union contracts at least twice at this point. And starting a third round for some of them. The, um, the first run-through, there was a lot of bad stuff in these contracts. Bad, bad phrases and bad decisions about how much time somebody should get for time off or for how they get a bonus or a stipend or whatever. And we spent a lot of time in that first run-through of cleaning up that stuff and only doing things that are considered mandatory subjects of bargaining. Bargaining out something that is not mandatory is costly. And there's still some things in some of these contracts because we weren't willing to pay for them to come out. But that's how we fix most of them. We, we take out the things that are sort of flagrant, I don't want to say abuses, but. They may have been put in for a very good reason at some point, say fifteen years ago. But we no longer have that same value for providing that benefit, so we need to find a way to get it out of the contract. The things that are coming ready to my mind are things I'm not supposed to talk about in public right now, so. But you, you have seen some of these contracts recently that we're working on and changing some of the rules. And we anticipate them saving the town real money without reducing services. Giving employees fair, fair salary increases. But also sort of protecting the town and saying, we're not just giving away the farm. So I'm not, not sure if I answered everything you're asking.
You did a good job of tying back to collective bargaining, how you actually approach negotiation. I guess the only thing I would say is just, you know, times are, times they are changing. The old, the old adage, the old song from the sixties is relevant now. Even in private industry, when companies don't bring revenue in, employees don't get raises, right? Whether they're union or not, so there's negotiation. My point is, at what point are we going to start talking about the things that are really affecting the town? Because we could be waking up in three or four years with an even worse situation than we're in right now. That's, that's a legitimate gripe, if you look at the history of where we're trending. So what I'm testing you on really is, what are you, what are your thoughts on being the leader and being put in a position? Well, you're not going to have enough money to pay these unions or negotiate. And how do we go around that? You did a pretty good job of answering, you know, what you would do, so I would, I appreciate that.
And, and this year, you guys are aware, we're laying off an employee in Town Hall on July first. And that was a decision I made, the employee reports directly to me. And in going through the budget process, this was a decision that was made. And I could have fought and said, there's no way we can survive without that employee here. But in looking at the balance of other cuts that would have had to have been made instead for that same amount of money. This was the best decision for the community. So that isn't really a union negotiation process for that. But it's an example of a hard decision that I was happy to make, not, not happy to make in terms of the employee outcome, but willing to make in my role here. That, hard decisions have to get made and I'm willing to make them.
Thank you. No, you've answered the question, I appreciate it. Anyone else?
I want to follow up, are you going to ask the follow-up question?
Well, I had integrated it when I asked.
Okay, because I, I'm interested in hearing a little bit, Andrew, about your thoughts relative to the schools' involvement with the budget process. And how the schools have influenced things along the way and how we address that going forward. As far as when do they get brought in? You addressed this a little bit, but when do they get brought into the discussion? How do they get brought into the discussion? And then how do we make sure that, that it's not a shock come February fifteenth? Or whatever the Saturday date happens to be, when suddenly they're presented with a budget that is different than what they may have anticipated?
So, um, this goes back to that, starting this group conversation earlier in the process and sharing those community values. And if we go back to last year, the direction from the TA was for contractual increases on salaries and no increases on expenses. And the schools came in with a much bigger increase than that. And, um, if that was the value that came out of a group discussion that started, say, last summer? And went through the budget message that goes out in November? And then they show up on January first with that document? I, as the TA, would send it back to them and say, you didn't follow the instructions of, you know, the group. It's, you know, it's the TA's budget message, but it would have been informed by that process that started over the summer and those people working together. And that didn't happen last summer. So, um, we found a way to work with the schools and try to give them as much as, of what they asked for. But have, if we go through that process this, this year? And this, and the budget message is, you know, here's, here's the most you can, you can put on the paper? And they come in with more than that, I would send it back to them. I would say, this group spoke and said, this is the value of the community, you're going to have to live within that value. And if that means they lay off a teacher or, um, you know, an aide, or the town has to, has to do that? Or we have to find other revenue sources or other ways of doing business to get to that balance? That's, that's that healthy and broad daylight conversation that I would like to see start this summer. We should be talking about fiscal twenty twenty, which starts twelve and a half months from now, today. Because it's going to take that long to, to marry up those values with the available resources.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, one last thing actually to your last point. What's the temperature of the rest of the group wanting to get ahead of things to that level? So how, I understand you want to plan out for fiscal year twenty now. Is that actually a viable ask? Can the other departments actually support that, namely the school department, to David's point, right? Could they have all the information available to be planning out alongside you? Or is that too much of an ask in your experience for them to be alongside you during this?
I've spoken to the superintendent about this and he is on board with starting the process as early as the rest of the community is ready. For me, it's not a matter of the detailed sort of ledger review of, of budgets, but it's that philosophical discussion. So I had this conversation with the finance committee maybe two months ago. And our natural growth rate sort of historically is about three and a half percent. Between the prop two and a half increase we do and our new growth rate, it averages about three and a half percent per year. So assuming that that is our baseline budget increase every year, that doesn't mean the schools only get three and a half percent. The Town Hall or the town-side budget in fiscal nineteen is going up about one point eight percent. So that means there's more money for the schools and in fact, the schools are going up about six percent. So it's, we can talk about it in that big picture and say, look, we only have about three and a half percent increase over last year. What are we going to do with that? And then we can have these conversations about, well, the schools really need five percent. How can we get them five percent within that three and a half percent overall? Those are the kind of conversations that should start in July or, you know, well before November, December. When people are busy with personal things and they've got a budget submission deadline. You shouldn't be looking at your budget for the first time, you know, December tenth, when you're getting ready for your Christmas parties, right?
Do you think it's a matter of a will? Getting it on the calendar and getting a process in place and setting expectations about getting it done? And it can actually work? Were you at least talking on a consistent basis and sharing information or?
I, I agree. I think the superintendent should be invited to all of our meetings. I know we're invited to all of theirs and I, I've attended a handful of them over the years. I believe some of the board members here attend them regularly. I think that's all part of this communication. Doesn't have to necessarily be a month of Sundays of meetings. It could be one hour-long conversation that sets the tone and the expectation and then a, a follow-up a few weeks later. But when, the first time that they get that communication is when they get a memo on November fifteenth. Saying, this is how much you can budget for next year. That's not good communication. That's not good leadership or good financial management.
If you have, just a follow-up on that. If you have the, that group that we've discussed and we've kicked around a little bit and had a little bit of its existence last year. Between the schools, the finance committee and the selectmen. And now we include the town administrator and the, or the finance staff. And it's considered the TA's budget letter that they put out in November, October, late October, early November. And that letter goes out, why wouldn't it be the letter from that committee with the understanding of the people that are part of that committee? That this is, this budget letter is coming from us, we were part of crafting this letter. You know, um, if you're, if you're a, you know, if you're someone sitting at a table as a stakeholder, as, as, as FinCom or as the schools, as the Board of Selectmen. Or people within this building, whoever, you know, whoever somebody sees fit to sit in those meetings, why doesn't that become? You know, what's your thought really on, would that become part of that letter? You know, so that if we sit together in a group and there's four, four people in the room or four groups in the room? And we put out the letter together, none of the four can complain. You know, is that, I'm, you know, is that a, is that a, something that we've thought about or something that you'd be willing to entertain? As the, as the person whose name is on the head of that letter?
Sure. The, uh, the letter comes from the town administrator because the charter says it does. But it's absolutely, as we, you know, we started the conversation talking about some of the tension between the day-to-day and the, and the board. The TA should be getting the guidance from the board and implementing, right? Those long-term strategies move in this direction. So this would be an example of that. And perhaps it's the, this board and those other groups, but there's this collective wisdom that says, this is the direction we want to move in. And if the town administrator's name is on the letter, it should certainly reflect that. If for no other reason, it gives the TA a little bit of political cover. Hey, the school committee and the, and the Board of Selectmen said, this is what you're going to get, so go out and do it. The town of Brookline negotiated between the town and the schools, an agreement that was a little more formal than what we're talking about right now. But it sort of goes back to Selectman Gavin's points earlier about following the policy or violating the policy. And it has to do with the accommodated costs that we sometimes talk about. So the town pays for all the health insurance, but about seventy-five percent or sixty-five percent of the health insurance recipients are school employees. recipients are school employees. So they add an employee, the town budget goes up if that person takes a health plan. And so having that level of communication, understanding the impact of a decision that the schools get to make, is part of that. In Brookline, they negotiated how that would work. And the finance director there was one of my professors at the Suffolk program I was in a few years ago. And he indicated to us that all of the problems, all of the debates, for instance, what we did with some of that excess revenue we had after the health insurance number came in this spring, it's all predetermined, because they had negotiated out what the split would be. And nobody argued anymore. They knew that when there was $100,000 on the table, some would go here, some would go there. And they didn't have to beg and borrow and make an argument, they just, that was what would happen. And when there was a reduction that was required, it was the same formula. So everybody had agreed that this is how it should work. I'm not suggesting that's what we should do, but that's one path that we could go down, in having that conversation. Say, this is how we're going to handle things moving forward. And then we're not, you know, pitting brother against sister in these debates, because the sister works for the schools and the brother works for the town, that sort of stuff. Right? So it becomes a little civil war here in Maynard.
I'd love to have Brookline's problems. The next question we've been asking is, what is your experience with economic development? Describe for us your most important planning initiative that you participated in over the course of your career. What was your role in the process? And can you describe the keys to success?
So, economic development is something that many of us touch on, and out of necessity, I don't think you can have one person, you see this in some communities, there's like an economic development director. They're pulling the strings of many different offices and people to get their work done. Because one person can't do it all. And our planning department serves a lot of that function in this town. We have an economic development committee. I serve on it. And one of the things that we've been doing for four years is sort of building capacity and building the opportunity to then implement some of these ideas that took a year or two to sort of figure out. You've seen a lot of that progress in the past year. The first year or two was like, what are you guys doing? Well, we were doing a lot of talking. But as we got into the third and fourth year of our existence, the committee's gotten much more capable and sophisticated in implementing its projects. That's true of any economic development program you do. It takes a long time to build economic prosperity. We have a downtown overlay district. We have only a couple of examples of it being taken advantage of in its first six or seven years of existence. And now before us, we have like five or six projects that are taking advantage of it. You know, it's just sort of the nature of that beast. But when it was put in front of the town a few years back, part of the promise was, this is going to help the downtown, it's going to be an economic driver. We're seeing that, I believe, now. An example of, an excellent one that I've been involved in, was garnering the Massworks grant last summer. If I was before a non-Town of Maynard interview committee tonight, I would tell them that I wrote a $3.2 million grant. And, you know, I would take all the credit for it, because that's how you try to sell yourself at an interview. You guys know better than that. I did write the grant, but I did it with the support and help of many people here in Town Hall, as well as our Stantec consultants, the Capital Group. It was sold to the legislature, not the legislature, but the Massworks folks, through the efforts of Kate Hogan and Senator Eldridge. All these people working together helped us get that grant. I would say, that's probably the most significant direct impact economic development program I've been involved in in this town. But we can go back over the past four and a half years and see all sorts of different planning initiatives I've been a part of, and find similar happy tales. We're doing a lot of great things in this town.
If you could pick one economic development project right now that would help propel Maynard forward, what would you choose to do?
I think I would love to change our downtown. You go to some communities and they have, sort of like, the brick sidewalks and the ballards that make the downtown look sort of cohesive and attractive. And something like that for our downtown might cost $2 million, right? But I think it would tie together so many other things that are happening in our community, and would just sort of have this sort of real pop to the town. So, you know, just picking one thing, and sort of saying, what could we do? What would have a huge impact? Beyond something like that specific, a lot of people are lamenting sort of the decline of downtowns nationwide. It's not unique to Maynard. I think our downtown has got a lot of abilities within it. And making sure it doesn't wither away is of critical importance to me. So.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay. Next question.
Seven.
What's that?
Seven.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, I thought you said, which question are we on?
I said, next question.
Oh.
Sorry.
Right.
It's okay. You want to read it? You can read it if you want.
I'm good, I got two.
Okay. Could you describe for us both your managerial style and your organizational strategies, strategy? Considering your response to these questions, what town government issues would you delegate into whom?
So, my first four years here, I was sort of the, you know, I described myself as a generalist, but I was sort of the jack of all trades. I was asked to work on a project here, or supervise a staff member there. And my management style there was, out of necessity, pretty hands-on. Whether the staff member needed guidance, or redirection, or just support, I was able and capable and moved in that direction. The past four or five months, I've been in a totally different role, and my management style has changed out of necessity. I rely much more on brief meetings with department heads, asking them, you know, what resources they need to tackle their problems, and how can I help them get there? And then leaving them to it. Because there's just, there aren't enough hours in the day to do all the things that I've been asked to do for the past few months. So in terms of the management style, you're probably familiar with Stephen Covey's book, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. He has, one of his tenets in that is, seek first to understand, and then to be understood. And I think that's a good foundation for how I try to interact with staff, in leading them and managing them. I need to know what's going on in their department and how I can fix it. And then I also need to be able to tell them, hey, you need to do this. You know, it may not be what they want to do sometimes. So there's that, understanding what their needs are, and then them understanding the direction that the community needs them to go in. So I would say that I would follow that management style more than any other I could reflect on in the moment. In terms of delegation, I'm looking forward to hiring someone to replace the assistant town administrator. And I don't know that I would recommend to this board that we hire the same exact type of person that was last hired. But that person would probably wind up getting a chunk of work delegated to them, in that sense that the way projects and things are delegated to me hasn't gone away. Somebody still needs to pick up some of those balls. So that would be a primary piece. I've done a lot more, it's pretty cool when you're the boss. You ask people to do stuff and they listen, and they actually do it. It was a lot harder as the ATA to tell people to do things or ask people to do things. It's, the staff's very responsive lately, which is terrific. And so I don't think I'm going to have a problem delegating out of necessity moving forward. There's great staff here, and they're all willing to pitch in.
Let's talk a little bit about that point. If the, as the ATA, if you felt that it was difficult to get a response from, is that because of structure?
It's a little tongue-in-cheek.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's real, but some of it was tongue-in-cheek, saying that, yeah. It is a structure. If someone doesn't report to you, it's difficult to tell them that they have to do something. And you need to work through, you know, your higher-ups. You know, in my case, it was asking Kevin to intercede, or perhaps approaching the board and saying, you know, we need to have some direction on this. As the TA, it'll be easier to make some of those decisions on my own, or work directly with the board in getting that guidance and direction.
Perhaps we then need to reflect on, you know, the actual structure of, the reporting structure, you know, like a diagram.
Sure.
So that's taken care of in the future. Because it's disappointing if, you know, if you're supposed to be second in command, so, quote-unquote, that there should be some type of a reporting structure that goes on.
So, I don't remember if it's in the charter or the bylaws, but there's a, in one or the other, there's a indication that the TA is from time to time supposed to provide an organizational chart to the board for adoption, or for, you know, just to keep everybody on board of what's changed or what's going on. And this might be a good opportunity for that to happen. I don't think it's happened in a couple of years.
I don't think it's in the charter, so it may be in the bylaws.
Right.
I think it may just be something that people kind of want to see done.
But that's an opportunity, if there is, like, for instance, when I was hired, I was, the ATA had a different role, I believe. And Kevin and I sort of negotiated over certain aspects of what he was good at, what I was interested in, those sort of things. And we sort of divided up the pie. I'm not sure how it happened between he and the previous town administrator.
Yeah, I know that some type of organizational structure in the town report that's out there.
Right. But that...
But that's different.
That was Kevin and I sort of delegating or dividing the pie up. And again, you know, that would happen. I hire a replacement assistant, and that person has a specific skill set, why wouldn't I take advantage of that? You know? So that would be where the delegation would lead, with that particular job.
Given that we've functioned the last few months with you as the acting town administrator and no assistant town administrator, and given our budget constraints as a town, do you think we can function without an ATA?
I wouldn't accept the job without that position being backfilled. It doesn't necessarily need to be an assistant town administrator, but you absolutely need a person in there. I was working outrageous amounts of time in February, March, April, May, some of it because of the town meetings, some of it out of necessity. And that was with backburnering all sorts of work that I would have done had there not been any turnover. There's an incredible amount of work for this community, the high service level we were talking about earlier, absolutely requires it.
Quick follow-up. Oh, Cheryl, you have something?
Oh, you can go.
Mel, go right ahead, you were leaning through it.
Okay. I was very excited.
The lean forward makes it...
I saw you leaned forward, so you're excited about it.
Caught your eye. Like a horse race.
So I guess, you know, my question would be, sort of, can you, thinking back around managerial style, you know, anything in your sort of past experience of relationships that you've had, either, you know, as a manager or one being managed, that kind of left you with lessons learned of, ooh, I wouldn't do that again, or if only I could do a repeat in that? And sort of, can you just talk in broad terms about, you know, what that experience was like, kind of what you took away from it, and how that may have adjusted your style going forward?
Sure. So I came out of higher education, I worked there for fourteen years. And in higher ed, everybody wants to help, everybody's working together, it's a team effort. It's just sort of the atmosphere of the environment. I then went and worked in public safety for seven years. And as great as police officers are in doing work that I could never do, they are the exact opposite of the stereotype of the people that work on a college campus. They are paranoid and risk averse, and not willing to share anything. And it was a complete culture shock for me. But I went from managing in one environment to having to manage in the other. And I learned a lot from that. One neat thing is, when you tell somebody at a college to do something, you have to follow up with them eighteen times, because they're busy doing sixteen other things, and they forget, and they've got buddies down the hall, whatever. You ask a police officer to do something, it's usually done like in a half an hour, and done correctly the first time, and that sort of thing. So there's these remarkable differences in the cultures, and the takeaways from that inform me in coming to this role, which is more like the higher ed role, in the sense that it's a little more open and collegial than the stereotype of the public safety office. But I couldn't be that, my role in public safety was essentially a lieutenant in the police department. I didn't have, I wasn't a sworn officer, but I was at that level of the hierarchy. And so if I asked sergeants or, you know, officers to do things, they would do them, because that was the role I had in the department. I couldn't have the same affect with, here, I had to switch back into that sort of more collegial performance role. And what I would take away from what I've learned there is, you can't paint this organization or that organization, the police department, for instance, with that bold paintbrush. You know, I can talk about it in that stereotypical way, but the reality is, I have to manage each person on somewhat of an individual level. And being directive and sort of chain-of-command oriented works with a lot of people. Working with them and sort of getting them to find, figure out what you actually want them to do, and make it their decision. You know, that's how you have to work with other people. So figuring out where the employee's at, and finding the best way to address them is really what leads to success in managing them. But having had those two sort of opposite experiences in my career, has helped me picking out those that need the chain-of-command and those that need the collegial work.
Thanks. Yeah, with regards to your organizational strategy and stuff, you know, I would like for you to expand a little bit on your philosophy on stated hours of employees, expectations for when they should be here, and why that would be different across any departments in town, without the obvious of, you know, 24-hour shifts for certain departments.
Sure.
And how that you would enforce that, or your thoughts around not enforcing that.
So, there's two pieces to that. Town Hall is really what we're talking about, right? Because we're not talking about, say, the police department or those shift places. And honestly, I'm not intimately aware of how the library functions, and whether or not people are showing up on time, or whatever. I leave that to the director of that organization. Town Hall has got four, what I call, forward-facing windows, that are expected by the town to be open when the building's open. Beyond that, I believe very firmly in flexibility and scheduling. We technically have about half of the people in Town Hall are hourly employees, they're overtime-eligible. The rest of the employees are salaried, and they're not overtime-eligible. If those open, forward-facing windows are staffed the appropriate hours that the building's open, whether somebody shows up five minutes or 10 minutes late because of dropping a kid off at school, and, you know, makes up that time, but, or leaves a few minutes early to get to an appointment, those things, I think, are sort of locally managed in the best interest of the employees. It increases job satisfaction when they know they've got a little flexibility, they're not going to be punished for showing up at five past eight, that sort of thing. I would say, within this building, there's probably some offices that aren't getting covered as fastidiously as they should be.
Understood on the public-facing windows, and understood on the intricacies of maybe healthcare, daycare, you know, appointments, flexibility within reason. I'm more addressing, I would like you to address more like standardized policies, where it doesn't seem to be that there's an equitable amount of hours across the Town Hall, that there's not a standard idea of who should be here at a certain timeframe, regardless of, you know, flexibility or not. I don't want to get into specifics, but that's my observation in the last three to four years, that certain people, you know, are here when the Town Hall's open and certain people aren't here. And quite frankly, a lot of it was stemmed from... people aren't here. And quite frankly, a lot of it was stemmed from, you know, the previous town administrator. There was a lot of opportunities for us to notice the town administrator absent. So, I'm looking for more like a standardized, hey, these are the expectations that the staff, including department heads, should have about how their officers, including themselves, should be staffed and available for the public, to know when the public wants to talk. And the reason I bring this up is, most candidates who've interviewed you, you're the fifth of the five, all stated a willingness to make sure that the department heads and others are available to public, as well as themselves, so that people in the town hall have access, residents in the town hall have access to who they need access to, to get stuff done. So, that's where this is coming from.
Sure.
If we can't count on those hours being published, regardless of whether a public window is open to drop off a check at the collector, or get a marriage intention or something like that on a Tuesday night, but equitably split, like everybody's putting in their fair share of time in the town hall, that's what I'm looking for. Do we have a documented approach for how those hours should be disseminated out to the department heads and their employees? And if not, would that be something that you would look to put in from an organizational standpoint?
So, in terms of documented, the hourly employees have set schedules, and they're expected to follow them. The salaried employees, you know, if it takes them 60 hours to get their work done, that's what it takes. If it takes them 35, nobody's watching the clock. And I think that's appropriate, right? At a management level, we have to know that they're doing their job. If one of those employees who seems to be not working the full 40 hours that people sort of stereotypically say is the right number, says, oh, I can't get my work done, I would have no qualms saying, well, you better start showing up for work a few more hours a week, because you've been cutting corners, you know, all summer, whatever. All right? That's a, that's a management conversation. If residents, other town staff, members of the board are implying that I can never get an appointment with employee X, they never seem to be here, I have not heard that. Certainly, people at the TA level and so on have off-site meetings out of necessity. The way we work, I am very available. And I'm not always here, but when I'm here, employees and residents ask to meet with me, and I almost never say no. It can be frustrating. I would prefer to have set office hours and say, hey, you will get time with me if you come, you know, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., or 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., or whatever, but...
So, that could be something as part of your organizational strategy, you could do as a tactic, okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, in fact, office hours were suggested to the staff last year, actually, before we swapped the offices. And again, because of the turnover and things that happened, they weren't implemented by me, but there was a sense, Kevin and I talked about this, essentially, he wanted me to serve as like an ombudsman, so that when a resident dropped in with something to talk about, somebody in a position to have a good, healthy conversation with them was made available. It's not a full-time job, but if it's five minutes here, five minutes there, it can be very disruptive to your workday, in trying to either have meetings or get through a project or whatever. So, scheduling it as office hours, maybe on some varying schedule for days and evenings, is absolutely a viable solution.
To your point on, you know, off-site meetings with town administration, that's logical. I think one of the things I struggle with, and maybe the board members did as well, is the previous town administrator was not very open until they were already gone, that they were unavailable. You've done a very good job of making yourself available in the interim job, I would have to say that. So, would that be something that the board and the future board members can expect, that you'll be upfront with the hours that you will be available on a more consistent basis? Hey, I have, you know, this off-site that I have to attend on Thursday, Friday of next week, I won't be available. I think that's part of the organizational, you know, best behavior that we should start to expect from the leadership in the town, about who's going to be available, who's going to be in charge when you're gone, things like that. I would hate to see it revert back to what had happened in the past.
So, I would agree. If that's the direction of the board, that's how it'll be. Currently, for instance, my schedule is very public in Outlook, and anybody that works in town hall can access it, and if they don't know where I am, they can see what my schedule says where I should be. And that's not anything new, that's always how I've worked. Getting that information to the board does start to cross over into that day-to-day versus, you know, big-picture stuff. I'm not trying to say it shouldn't happen. I would suggest that my role would be to let the board know when I'm taking vacation time, or will be out of the office either unexpectedly, or, you know, for more than, say, you know, half a day or something. But if I'm just at a meeting in another town, meeting with Kate Hogan at the State House or something, I don't expect to report that up to the board on a regular basis. But I don't think that's what you were implying, just the bigger-picture stuff.
No, no, it's more like, when you do reach out at one point, not having the head of the town available, because they're on off-site, they're indisposed, and finding out about that afterwards is sort of aggravating, I think.
That they're out of state at a conference or something.
Yeah, not able to respond, right?
You should absolutely be, as a board member, be aware of the TA's whereabouts in that sense.
Thank you.
I will shut off GPS tracking on my phone, though, on weekends.
Okay. So, the eighth question was, does your work history contain any experience with a town meeting form of government? If so, please explain. I'm pretty sure that all of us in the room are aware that you have town meeting experience, but if you'd like to, you know, touch on the town meeting, any opinions about it, you may...
Actually, if I could, just sort of spin that question a little bit, and given that we do know that you have town meeting experience and whatever, what is there about our town meeting process, or our town meeting presentation, that you think is flawed in any fashion, and how would you change it as the town administrator, working, of course, with, since the meeting is the moderator's meeting, but working, the preparation from the town side?
So, I'm happy to answer this question. I'm not sure you're going to be happy with my answer. I would change, I would have a conversation with the community about what it expected from town meeting. We have an open town meeting form of government, and in my opinion, that means that we should be talking about our warrant articles, and debating the pros and cons, and then voting on them. My experience in the past several years has been, the goal of town meeting is to get it over with tonight, and that flies in the face of that open format. So, if the community is focused on being expedient with its town meeting, I would suggest to consider changing to a representative town meeting form of government, or even a city council form of government. But if they truly want to have an open town meeting, and I believe this town does, I see the people showing up for meetings last night, they're behind me here tonight, you know, this community shows up and wants to take part in its government, then we need to let open town meeting be open. And if a debate's going to take place on the Coolidge School for 45 minutes or an hour, so be it. That's what town meeting is for, in that form of government. So, David, I'm not sure if I've answered the question that you were asking specifically, but I like our form of government, I like our process, there's little tweaks I might do to a town meeting, you know, the way it's run or functioning, but that's nibbling around the edges. What I'm addressing is more of the big picture.
How about, my question was more on the preparation from the town side, and how we could improve our performance at town meeting. I like, I have said to other candidates here, that town meeting performance and the experience of town meeting is reflective on the board, as well as on the community as a whole, but, you know, it's a reflection of the board in my eyes.
Sure.
Sometimes I believe that we can do a hell of a lot better.
So, we'll take our most recent town meeting as a great example. I don't know what it looked like from the audience perspectives, but I was embarrassed for myself and for the, you know, collectively for the town and the board, at the number of typographical problems in the warrant. And we talked about that as we discovered them, and throughout the process of getting to town meeting with the addendum revisions, and then after the town meeting at a debriefing, and how we might address that in the future to ensure that that doesn't happen. You know, one typo's forgivable, but I think there were seven or eight, at least, that we submitted an addendum for. You know, that requires just better editing, you know, more time, somebody to sit down and really read through things and double-check and triple-check. You know, it would be easy to say, well, we didn't have, you know, both a town administrator and an assistant town administrator this year, and that's why we missed all those typos. I can't say that's true. You know, I don't know that I caught seven typos last year. I know that I read the warrant and probably caught a few of them, but that would be an easy excuse, and I wouldn't make that. I would say, we need to do a better job of making sure we're prepared. That's one example, the editing of that document. There's a few other parts of the process that could be a little smoother. Again, collective decision, we can say we're going to do it this way, or we can say we're going to do it...
I think your time's up, Andrew.
Yeah, by being sung off the stage at the Oscars, the...
My question wasn't directed in any way towards this most recent...
No, no, but giving that specific example, I think, is it residents, right? It's, what can we do better? There's always improvements we can do, and one glaring one this year was poor editing, poor double-checking of a document. And I can assure you, we found dozens of errors ahead of time, fixed them. It's the nature of a document like that, that comes in from all different corners of the community, and turns into 26 warrant articles, right? But we didn't catch all of them, and we could have done a better job there. So, there's other aspects of town meeting that we could tighten up like that.
So, we're talking about this year's town meeting, and the desire to finish in one night. I guess, yeah, there's nobody here that wants to have to go to a second night of, you know, the regular town meeting, and past 11 o'clock, and all the, you know, all the rules that apply to all these different situations, but that's, that's got nothing to do with us. I mean, we, as a group, present the articles as they come up, and if there's debate on them, we debate and we discuss, and that's the community. We do our debating and discussing before they get on the warrant. And then the community has the opportunity to get the warrant in advance, read it, look at it, and if they have questions, then we have debate, you know. Did anybody here anticipate we'd have 45 minutes talking about a sledding hill, in six seconds talking about a $43 million budget? I mean, how does that, I don't understand, you know, I'm just kind of having, I want you to clarify how you think that that's something that the town, or the selectmen, or anybody that plays a part in that evening's process have anything to do with getting in and out of there by a certain time, because clearly, there was, you know, I mean, whether or not the town moderator, no matter who he is, gives everybody an ample opportunity to speak, people were clearly given ample opportunity to speak this year, and they didn't take advantage of it. So, I don't see where that's a negative. You know, if everybody, if we all do our job, the town administrator, the people in this room, the moderator, the presenters, the person standing up to answer the question, we all do our jobs, we ought to be out of there in an hour, whether we have 30 or 15 questions, because people will have the information, they'll have the answers ahead of time, and it'll be really just a confirmation of, this is what the people that we've elected, and that we've hired to operate the town and manage the town, have suggested is best, and there'll be a lot less discussion. But that's, I mean, I don't, I don't understand how that's a negative. Can you tell me why you think that's a negative?
I'm not suggesting that having a town meeting in one night is a negative. I am suggesting that gaveling through a $43 million budget that was not fully presented, and no questions were even asked from the audience, because the presentation wasn't done, and then it gavelled through to a vote, was not a responsible way to run the meeting. And I don't want to criticize that meeting, I'm using that as an example of, if we're an open form of government, this is the question I was responding to, what about, what is it about town meeting that I might change? If we're an open town meeting form of government, we should take our time, and the town meeting should be debating these warrant articles. If we're a representative form of government, everything you just said is more clear and more obvious how you want to move through the process. You can still do a town meeting in one night, in that open forum, but it shouldn't be rushed through, because we want to get done in one night. It should be, it should be done at the pace that it needs to get done at.
If you present, present the budget, and we present it the same every year, we present the top, what is it, was it 12, 12 to 15 line items, or a little more on the budget that makes it to the warrant, that one page. If you present that, and there's nobody in the room that has a question about it, how much further do you want to take it? You know, how much further would you take it? Like, on the next warrant, would you put, you know, the backup to certain things, which is in the warrant anyway, you know, it's in the warrant, but if there's no questions, what do you want to do? Like, you know, you don't even have to answer it, it's just kind of a...
Were you commenting, Andrew, that you think it would be healthier as a town if we debated things like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, by the way. I'm flabbergasted by the fact that nobody asked a question about a $43 million budget, while we sent 45 minutes talking about a hill, that basically, A, there's been no vote to sell the place, no contracts negotiated about anything surrounding that building, it was just a thought that the selectmen have the opportunity to look into those type of things, and that created a 45-minute discussion. The fact that nobody asked a single question about a $42 million budget is outrageous. I agree with you 100%, but I don't see how that's something that anybody, yourself included, has done in a, you know, to the detriment of the process or to the town. If people didn't want to ask a question, what can we do? And I mean, you know, the moderator was happy to get out of there, but it's...
I'm merely responding to the question, and I'm not trying to debate whether or not we should have done that.
Yeah, I understand.
I would like to see more conversation.
I feel the same way you do about that night, but I just don't see how, I guess the question, the original question, after, the follow-up question was, how do we control what level of debate goes on?
So, perhaps a better way of addressing that question was, the sledding hill's a good example. We collectively might have anticipated the controversy of asking to consider selling that property, which is the only question we were really asking. May we have permission to consider selling the property? And had we anticipated what wound up happening that night, more time may have been spent educating the community about what our intentions were. And maybe it would have been a 10-minute conversation instead of 40 minutes, right? So, that would be a lesson learned from the town meeting that we could do a better job of in the future, is looking at certain warrant articles, anticipating what might be controversial, and then making sure we're communicating out to the community what our intentions are, and what the pros and cons are of these decisions. And we can do that with the budget as well. Perhaps we got very few, or no questions on the budget, because we did a great job of explaining it. I doubt that's the case, but it's possible. The fire station's another example, where I think we did a very good job of getting the message out, what we were intending to do, we knew our thinking on it, a lot of effort had been put into it by a handful, a large number of people, really. And it, you know, the community heard it, and then voted, and that was a very appropriate discussion, back and forth, in my opinion.
The next question that asked, I believe you answered it in response to Terrence's follow-up on question five, but the question that we had in here as the ninth question was, do you have any prior experience negotiating collective bargaining agreements, and if so, how do you perceive the relationship between labor and management, and how does that perception help to attain the best agreement for all parties? And I'm pretty sure that that, unless somebody else feels otherwise, that question's been answered fully. And he answers the question five.
Not that we're trying to run through this, Andrew, but...
Rewind, rewind the tape to minute seven.
That's what I was. The other one is, is number 10, is, in your career, do you have any experience in obtaining grants from municipalities, either through the state or federal governments, or any other source? And I think that, you know, that's, you can speak on it if you'd like to, but I think if you don't, I'm satisfied that you answered the question in answer to another question, when we talked about some grant writing.
Yeah, I would only like to say two quick, very quick things. One is, I have an extensive grant writing experience, going back to the university and the public safety in Reading. Probably, I'd have to go back and add it all up, but probably $2 million in grants that I've been involved in, not including this most recent Mass Works one. And the other thing I'd like to mention about it is that grant writing is a real skill, and it can be a moneymaker for a community. And the town should look into, either through a consultative or through a full-time employee, consider grant writing as a foundation of how we move the community forward, because we can essentially make, like, these $3.2 million grants, if we have somebody dedicated to that role.
One quick question. What's your procedure to research grants, grant opportunities?
So, the state's done a great job in the past couple of years, going back just before the Baker administration, but Governor Baker has accelerated it. Grants are pushed in front of... in front of municipalities in a way that they weren't, say, 10 years ago. But, there are federal indexes of grants, there are state ones on the mass.gov site where you can find them. And then each department, and I have conversations with department heads about this, the chief of police, for instance, the fire chief, library director, COA director, they're all involved in grant projects. And when we hear about them, or when I say to them, what's going on with grants in your area, or I heard about a grant available, say, to the libraries, Steve, our library director, usually is aware of it, and knows whether or not it's a fit for us, and whether or not he's going to be applying for it. But encouraging that, that they do a lot of the legwork figuring it out, and then the town administration provides them with the support they need to get it. The ClearGov grant, we got last January as an example of that, where I touched base with Michelle Rosendez at the schools, and Mike Guzzo, our finance director, and talked through the pros and cons of that, applied for it, and we've implemented that now.
Anyone follow? No? All right. The next question is, improved communication with the board of selectmen, multiple department heads, and the citizens of Maynard in general have been a priority at the board of selectmen's annual goal-setting meetings for the past few years. Do you see communication as a shortcoming, and how would you improve the same?
Communications is something we can't do enough of. I mentioned earlier that I emailed the chair about the sewage problem in town today. A little glitch, but you're probably going to have a phone message about it, or an email from somebody, and you should know what's going on with it. And that's, you know, why I reach out. I write a monthly column for the COA newsletter. It goes to every community, every house in the community. That's very important to me, and it's not so much to reach a specific demographic of the town, but knowing that that's another channel for communicating has its own value. Not everybody reads that, but not everybody goes to our town website either, right? And not everybody gets the all-call messages that come out of Town Hall for emergencies or special announcements, right? So, having this sort of multifaceted approach to communication is really the solution, or the goal here. So, frequency and quality and multi-modes is the best way to communicate, and remembering that it's a two-way street. I've received emails from each of you over the four months I've been here, asking me about something that you've heard about, and looking for my perspective on it. I won't, as much as I might put my ear to the ground and go downtown and talk to shopkeepers, you know, hold meetings with business owners in town, all the different ways that I communicate and receive information, I'm not going to hear everything. And hearing it occasionally from you is perfectly appropriate, and creates that relationship and that two-way communication stream that we all need.
How do you push down communication standards to your staff, including your department heads? Best process for communicating, properly using email, social media to get message out to town, making sure, ensuring that folks are actually CC'd on emails, that should be, versus people deciding who they want to put on emails? I mean, I'm looking for a little more standard process around communication that you would invoke, because I think we're lacking one consistently.
Yeah.
Most departments do a good job with it, but not everybody does, and there should be a standard for how we communicate.
That's a great suggestion. I haven't, I haven't considered that as a, as a standard that needs to be provided, but I would agree with you. It would be helpful to sort of say, hey, folks, I get an email from the state on things like hurricanes and, you know, major storms, and they put hundreds of people in the CC box. And, like, you can't read the email because you're scrolling through a giant list of names, and it's very easy to put that same list in the BCC box, and boom, the data that you really care about's right in front of you. So, you know, an example of how we could improve communications, you just gave it, is having a standard protocol, whether it's email, how they answer the phones. There's a lot of things we could do better in standardizing that way. You asked how I do communicate now. At each of your meetings, you get a TA report, which is an opportunity to connect some of those day-to-day issues we were talking about earlier, and make sure that you're aware of what's going on routinely in town. The big things you guys already know about, obviously, right? So, I do something similar with the staff. They get a bi-weekly newsletter, email to them. It is not the TA report. There's a bit of overlap, but it's addressing things that are more important to the staff as coworkers. Becky Moska's been championing a lot of our wellness programs. Those things are announced in the newsletter and promoted in the newsletter, for instance. You've seen the visitors' code of conduct signs at our windows. Those came out earlier this year in the most recent newsletter. Folks were reminded that there's a reason for them, and they need to be up and on display. So, you know, some of that is handled in that sort of broadcast way. A lot of the other communication is one-on-one.
Thank you.
With, you know, with staff specifically.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, the, file this, well, one, two last questions, but it's all really one. One of it says, please tell us one thing about yourself. We would not know by reading your resume or taking part in this interview. Kind of a Google, a Google fact, if you will.
An ungooglable fact.
Yeah, this is an ungooglable fact.
And then, just following up at the end, at the end of that, if there's any, if you'd like to make a closing statement to us on this job and, you know, why we're here tonight, feel free to do so after that.
So, an ungooglable fact. When I was in first grade, the chain fell off my bicycle, and I crashed into a garage and broke my right hand, and the nuns at the Catholic school I attended taught me to write left-handed. So, flying in the face of 50 years of Catholic doctrine. So, I was the first.
Do you write left-handed now?
I do. But I'm a natural writing.
Wow.
The...
Superhero almost. Can you put it, go on again, like a superhero almost.
Perhaps. The, I'd love to hear if the, if the board has a vision for the community, where they'd like to see Maynard, say, in 2030. We have our Sesquicentennial coming up in two short years, and, you know, where might we be a decade later? If there's any, any nuggets of wisdom you'd like to send my way, I'd love to hear it.
Nuggets of wisdom or aspirational thoughts? I think from a, you know, as I look ahead, knowing some of the ideas that we have in play, what would I like to see more of? I would love to see the revitalized downtown that we've talked about, more integration of these sort of mixed-use developments, where we see a lot more residential units into town and sort of pulling that component into the walkability facet. I still have my secret dream that there's a way in which some of the mill buildings get converted into super cool lofts that connects in with the mass transit and the commuter rail that makes us more of a pull-out from the city, and kind of brings an increased diversity within to our community that still sort of gets the coolness of the strong history and identity that we have. So, that's kind of what I would see, is almost like that, that pulling together of some of the components that we've talked about already within our master planning structure, really continuing to build off the downtown as an anchor, that explosion around some of the great things that we've done with our really vibrant arts and culture community. I think there's a real basis for that. And to see the community as a whole continue to come around that vision. You know, we still have attention within our community at times about some of the new directions and new growth, and to kind of have, have all the different parts of our community sort of see the potential of that, see their values and their history and what they love about the town reflected in how that direction expands forward.
My turn. I want to be sure that in 20 years, 30 years from now, Maynard still has the same character, the same charm, the same small-town feel that I've come to know and love. I don't want to, I don't want to lose that, and I think many of our residents also find that that's what's charming about our community. Having said that, I do think, to Cheryl's comment about the downtown, I think we need to be, I want to see a bustling downtown. You know, it's sort of the New England-y, snowing, falling down as people shop or whatever. So, I think we need to be willing to accept some type of residential development in some fashion that would allow for that to happen. And I think, I think of Hudson and Hudson's downtown. I think ours, our downtown is more charming than Hudson, but I think that Hudson found a way to get people there. And so, we need to spend the next several years working on a way to find how to get people that might reside in downtown, whether it be helping the mill with their vision that once, they once had for lofts, as you mentioned, or some other type of development that would allow, and, you know, for people to be forced, lack of a better phrase, to be downtown, and to start that, to start that downtown. But from a global community, I want to keep the charm, I want to keep the community spirit, I want to keep the small-town feel.
Okay. 10 years? Let's see, let's see what 10 years brings. You know, see where the mill is, where the development of the mill is. Do they finish this iteration of development that they proposed, where others have, you know, started and worked for a couple of years and have pulled back because they didn't have the tenants that they thought they needed, or the tenants they thought they wanted, and then what does, you know, what does the development on Parker Street do? Because the, you know, if you talk to the people in Hudson and there, and to others that have a history with that town and that project, that project up on the hill, which is actually in Berlin, is what drove the redevelopment of downtown. You know, kind of one, it followed, it followed that larger development. So, you know, hopefully, we'll see the same type of reaction to opening a mixed-use development, and ours is going to actually include two different types of residencies. So, hopefully, we experience the same growth and the same activity in our downtown and, you know, re-invigoration of downtown that it desperately needs, and a new fire station for David.
We go in sequential order here?
It's right down the row.
All right. So, 10 years for me, I'll skip with the obvious, what we've been talking about for years. With regards to downtown, I'd like to see downtown change. I'd like to see some of the landlords move on, sell their properties. Just because something's old doesn't mean it's good or it's actually antique, you know? Sometimes things need to change, and you need to knock things down to build something new. I agree with David. I'd like to see some housing downtown. I think you have the potential in Maynard, the way it's laid out, to be much more an affectionate place than Hudson's downtown is. Hudson's downtown is just a long strip. It's effective for them, but doesn't want to make me go there. You know, when you walk to downtown Maynard, it does give you sort of a feeling of a community and place you want to be. But once you get there, you start to realize, wow, there's so much potential here, that killer P-word, right? I'd like to see some changes in the town. I'd like to see some people move on from this town that have been holding this town back, that own some of those properties. I'd like to see us take some chances. I'd like to see us incubate some of the new business ideas out there. I'd like to see a Wi-Fi ring around the town where any business could come in and do work. It doesn't matter, you know, they have to connect to Comcast. It just have it, you know, on, you know, have it on-demand, connect to the internet, because this is what most young workers and most kids in school are used to right now, and they're going to be demanding that. So, we're missing an opportunity to bring technology into the downtown forefront as well. And ultimately, what I'd like to see, I'd like to see a community that really, instead of subscribing to the tyranny of or, which if you're not sure what that is, it's, we can have this, or we can have that, but we still replace that with an and. You know, we can have this, and we can have that. And I think too often, we get so focused on what we don't want or what some other person wants, that we limit ourselves in choices. And I think that's short-sighted from a long-term planning perspective.
I agree with all the previous answers. I'd like to see a focus on bringing in new revenue sources. I think with the tax rates being what they are in this town, Maynard's always had high taxes, and I think what set us apart from the communities around us was that our home values particularly were a lot lower than the surrounding communities. And I think in the last year to two years, we've really seen home values skyrocket while our tax rate has stayed as high as it's been, if not going up higher every year. And I think now the actual bill for taxes that people are getting is substantial compared to what it used to be, and we're catching up to the more wealthier communities around us. And I think that's painful for the demographic we have in Maynard. So, I think we need to really work on, you know, finding those grants on the state and federal level and any other funding sources we can, so we can still raise gas and still provide services and educational needs that this town wants without, you know, it coming at the price of taxes on the back of residence.
Thank you all. That was excellent. I wrote some notes here. Closing, just want to say thank you for having me in here. I am very interested and very ready for this job. I would very much like to serve Maynard for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, we take a five-minute break.
All right.
Taking a break, Katie, five minutes. Taking a break, Katie, five minutes.
Andrew, thank you.
Gavel night.
So, I guess what we've decided to do is go down the line and suggest everybody's, each person suggests their top two.
Are we going to write them down? Are we going to like...
Top two or top three?
Do you want to write them down?
If you write them, it has to be oral so that the public can hear.
Yeah.
I think...
But I'm fine with doing it oral, but I feel we should write it down so we are responsible for our own...
I can write it down.
Yeah.
And I think we should see them in the order of our rank. So the first name you say is your first choice, followed by second and third.
I second that.
How many people each person?
I think you guys have said three, right?
I suggested three, just to...
I'm comfortable with three.
Or it could be just whoever you feel...
Yeah, well, you could do that too.
That, you know, that warrants further discussion from our, from our perspective. I, you know, I may not have three that I, that I think is there. You may have four that you think warrants further discussion, but at the end of the day, if, if I name the same two people that you've named, well, then those two people will automatically bubble to the top, assuming everybody else has one of them, so...
Well, David, you and I are always on the same page, so...
We've learned that over the last...
Expect that to happen.
We've learned that over the last three years, haven't we?
No, I, I like that idea. I'm just, my, my only fear with not doing three, at least to start, is that somebody could remove themselves from the running, right, based on other circumstances and, you know, we're left...
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all. I was just...
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So we have two choices at the end of the day. You can, and if we don't make a decision, we can, or if we make a decision and that person decides to do something different, we can go back and select one of these five, or we can start the process over. Those are our choices, as far as that goes.
Okay.
So can you say that again?
Chris, I'm sorry.
I don't get it.
You got distracted folding this paper.
If...
I was.
So, so our choices are, you know, we can do whatever we want, but if we decide, if we make a decision tonight and that person decides they want to do something else and they, they go somewhere else, because there is another, one of the people that is a finalist somewhere else, and they make a decision to go somewhere else, there are our selection as well. We can make a selection from the remaining four, or we can, we can have the committee reconvene and select more names for us. And if we do select anybody, at that point, our committee is considered to be discontinued or disbanded.
Well, I would say from my, at least this is me, my thought, there are two candidates specifically that whether one or the other got a position at the end of the day. If one of them was the choice of the board and the other one was the backup, from our perspective, I would have no problem whatsoever in choosing that person.
Right.
So I have two, two people, and specifically that I think would, would do very well and would be successful. So, you know, again, I, I think that if we're comfortable with the second person, all of us, then maybe we can just say, okay, this is our first choice, but if something happens to number one, we know who number two would be. Then, then the danger is that person says, well, you're my, I'm your number two, I'm not interested, but I don't think that'll happen.
Yes.
I like that idea, too.
So before we start asking that question, I'll leave you with this from, from town council, and we, I forwarded this to everybody, so everybody's seen it. I'll just remind it, and the question that I asked was, any other things we ought to avoid while making our decision from a legal standpoint? Her answer was no. Just remember this: This is all done in public, and therefore, any comments about any of the candidates will be recorded and/or reported. Therefore, I would only discuss those things which are factual, and not discuss any rumors or other unsubstantiated information. So who'd like to give us their name first? Anybody? Anybody want to volunteer?
I want to start at the left end of the table.
Well, we kind of, we kind of go left to right.
I like that plan. It's like absolutely...
I always get to go last, because I'm...
But it is, it is awkward for them, because it's not really left to right for them, right, is it?
So...
Not us.
Let's all vote for Cheryl Stern.
Okay. So that's the process.
I'll go.
Okay, if I was to put forward my candidates, my, and this, I think would be in how I've assessed them overall, I would start with Jason Silva, then Robert Curtin, and then Andrew.
Okay. David?
I would reverse the first two. I would go with Robert, followed by Jason, followed by Andrew.
Okay. Terrence?
I would go with Greg, my number one. Jason, my number two, followed by Andrew.
Okay. Melissa?
I would do Greg, number one, Jason, number two, Andrew, number three.
So you guys are all doing the same thing? Okay. Three, Andrew. Andrew is also my third. My first choice would be Robert Curtin, with Jason as my second choice, and Andrew would be the third. So, kind of, is a, you know, so that takes two people off of the table, which is Greg Johnson and Bonnie Biarki, and leaves us with three, and Andrew is a third choice if something happens to the other two type of thing.
So are we just counting up the number of votes?
So what I did is I did for, I gave a, I gave a three point for a one, a two point for a second, and one point for the third, and then I was just trying to add up, so...
Looks like we're going to have to.
Yeah, so with that count, five, gee, two, six. Okay, so it ends up with eight points for Robert, 11 points for Jason, five points for Andrew, and six points for Greg. If somebody wants to check my math, that's fine.
No, I was getting there, but it sounds right. I guess my question would be, would anyone on the board then have an objection if Jason was our number one person to offer the job to?
An objection?
Yeah. We don't, I mean, we don't have to go over the point fly. He wasn't everyone's first choice, but, I mean, is that who we want to go with?
Well, I, I think that, from my perspective, I think we should at least have a discussion regarding...
The relative strengths.
The relative strengths. Perhaps with the top two, given that the, unless you want to discuss the third one...
Three and four? Three and four?
Yeah, three, unless we want to discuss all four. But I do think we should discuss, because there wasn't a unanimous choice of anybody, really, as the top choice, I'd like to hear perspectives as to why people had the person ranked where they did, and then go from there.
So Jason wasn't my top choice, and I have no problem with him. I was on the fence between the two. I mean, one of the things that led me towards picking Greg over him was his proximity to Maynard, and I felt that he had a lot of leadership managing a lot of people at once, and that was one thing I felt that Jason was lacking in. While he had managed people, his answers were that he had never managed more than three or four people at a time. So I don't think there was anything that he said during his interview that made me feel he wasn't capable of managing more people at a time, but to me, that kind of would offset them as being, you know, a one and a two versus Jason being the one and Greg being the two.
And I would offer, some of the reasons that I did not, not just for, like, reservations with respect to Greg were, in looking in the town administrator role, I was concerned about just the number of technical aspects involved in the role and his, while having some of the academic credentials versus the practical experience. My reason for ranking Jason, the way I did, over, over Robert, and I agree, like, I thought, in my, you know, I think I echo David's vote on this, like, my, my, they were sort of tied for me, and where I came down on Jason was I really thought that there was a component for kind of creativity and engagement at the state level, and a way of thinking about some of the challenges that was different and exciting for me. And I thought that he could bring kind of a, a vision of that into the town that we haven't had, while at the same time, having the experience of how the structure works, how, how the pieces would pull together. And I just sort of, there was a piece of that kind of energy and way of thinking about problems and possible solutions, and the background of connections and relationships that I thought would be beneficial.
I agree with that. The other thing I wanted to add, too, is one of the reasons I did put Bob in my top choices, one of his answers really turned me off, and that was when we asked him what he had done to kind of experience Maynard during the interview process, and he had said he had driven through town. He hadn't gotten out, he hadn't patronized any of our stores or our restaurants, whereas all the other candidates had had an opportunity or had created opportunities to do that. And to me, that, that turned me off a lot, especially as someone who had been so involved in the community that he's currently working in. So I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, that, that's a fair enough comment. The, my rationale for placing Robert first, and quite frankly, I think Robert and Jason were, were very close, and, but what brought me over the edge was Robert's focus on town government versus city government. And part of this might be a prejudice that I have, because we have experience here in Maynard with bringing somebody in from a city, and it was a tough change. It was a tough, tough change for the Board of Selectmen. It was a tough, tough change for the individual who was involved, and I think in many ways there were some tough changes for the employees in town. And one of the things that Jason said that was somewhat disturbing, or concerning, I should say, not disturbing, was his lack of an understanding of the dynamics in a town with the school department. And that really shook me a bit, because he sees it as, you know, that the schools are run by the mayor, and the school, so there shouldn't be any conflict, or there shouldn't be any struggle with the schools, because what's the problem? The, the mayor is, you know, the mayor is the voice. As we know, that's not the, the situation. I think Jason may run into a situation that he's not expecting here in town with the dynamics with the schools. Bob, on the other hand, when he spoke about the, the whole budgetary process and the way that it, that it developed in his eyes, was right on point, from my perspective, relative to how the town works. And coming from Linfield, that is a town of, I think he said 13,000, to Maynard, which is 11, in my eyes, it's almost like it's a, he'd be able to hit the ground running. Sure, he'd have to learn personalities and everything else, but I was very, very pleased with both of those individuals, but what really turned it on for me, for Bob versus Jason, was the whole issue with the town, focus on, his focus and experience with town government versus city government.
So let me get this straight, so Jason was still your second choice, though, even with your concerns?
My only concern really was the, was, yes, he was, and the only concern I had was his, because he was dynamic. He was, you know, I think he would be...
Who was dynamic?
I thought Jason was dynamic. I thought that he was captivating in many ways, and, you know, the, but his focus on city government and state level government is what, it's different from the town government. And is, yes, his experience at the state level would perhaps help him with contacts and what have you, but I, I think I am more comfortable with somebody with the town experience coming in, stepping in to the town government, and I think he could, I think Bob would be able to hit the ground running.
All right. I didn't, I didn't dislike Bob at all. Actually, I did like Bob. I thought Andrew did himself a big service tonight during his interview. Kind of elevated him to where I would have had Bob. My reasoning for choosing Greg and Jason as my top two is I think both of them are malleable, and I think what this town needs is somebody who's going to allow the Board of Selectmen to put their priorities as given by the people and the faith in the election that the Board of Selectmen have, and help drive. And I feel what's happened in the past here is there's been a separate agenda from some of the leadership here, where they haven't wanted to willfully deploy the priorities of the Board of Selectmen. We've, they, it's been lip service. So I think both of them, and that wouldn't be puppets, but they'd be malleable to a point where we could build a relationship with both of them, because they're newer in that role. Both of them had great experience, I thought, with working within the Commonwealth and within their, their current jobs. I mean, you can't get somebody that has the experience that we're looking for all the time, right? So I think we, we understand that. I think both had a really good experience with writing grants, which is something that we think we all, we all need to look at every avenue. I thought Greg, what Greg did for, for my, my eyes, and I could be biased, because I'm an ex-military person, is he has the ability to have to work with anybody that's under him. He doesn't have a choice, right? And he has the experience of that. You, you don't get to pick who's put in your platoon or your battalion or, or your, you know, or your company, right? So, and you have to be able to lead, and you have to be able to execute. And I think he's, clearly, if he's been a successful Marine officer, he has shown that he's been able to do that, and I would, I would have no expectation that he wouldn't do it. And on top of that, what separated him from Jason for me is he did take the extra step of being a participant in Maynard every single day. He's down here with his family, he's shopping in our shops, he's walking our streets, he's on the bike trail, and for me, that gave a little more credence. Not that Jason didn't participate, he certainly did, he was down there, he was with his family as well, but I thought the deciding factor for me over the two was that the proximity to Greg and his access to the town and more intimate knowledge did it for me. With regard to Jason, I understand what your point of view is on the city side, and it was slight concern for me, too, because it's a total, if you haven't grown up in a city, you have no idea what it's like to have somebody else make all the decisions for your, in, in, you know, what happened, right? And sometimes that's good, because you don't have to worry about town meeting, right? But the point is, is I think he deferred a lot to what the mayor did, to your point. Maybe he couldn't be as evolved as he would have liked to have been in some situations, but I still got a good feeling that he would be, you know, anxious to do a good job here for Maynard, and he would give it a shot. Secondarily, he was looking at another role in his region, and that's always a risk to me, right? That, you know, I put all my eggs in that candidate, and they go, and suddenly went down to our number two candidate because he took another job somewhere else, right?
My, my one retort or reaction to Greg, quite honestly, I just thought he was too green, didn't have the experience that I think was necessary for a, of town administrator's role. I think he needs to get some more experience under his wing. I think he would be, if we ever had a, an assistant town administrator's position that we were going to choose from, I think that I would be anxious to consider him, to be able to develop him into somebody that could have the future role. But I just don't feel that Greg was as experienced as we need here in Maynard at this time. We have some issues that we really need to deal with, and we need somebody that has the capabilities and the understanding and the knowledge to be able to really hit the ground running. So that was my issue with, with Greg.
I would echo David's. That was my reservation with Greg as well. And with such to your comment, Terrence, on, on the communication piece, like, with the board, that also actually was one of the reasons why I fell a bit more, why I fell more on the side of Jason over Bob on that piece of it, because I agree, I felt both were very clear in their understanding and their articulation of the relationship between the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. At the same time, I, I sort of had a sense that, in some ways, I felt like Bob's answers were almost too much of what we would want to hear, and I felt that Jason's answers were somebody that got it, would be responsive, would follow that lead, but I also liked the way in which he responded about giving candid feedback and, you know, and being, being, I felt like there'd be a, I had a sense that he would be willing to be a bit more assertive in at least making a point of view and trying to build a case, and that's what I kind of heard from him in the interview. And I was a little bit concerned that what I heard from Bob in the interview was a bit more of, no, I, I take my lead from the Board of Selectmen, and I'm like, hmm, is that what would really happen, though?
It was a bit more placating, I think, to what we wanted to say.
Yeah.
And I, I would agree, and I, Dave, I understand your point on the greenness. I would also say it's, I'm very cautious about flipping the script on that, because you're looking at someone older with more experience at the expense of someone who hasn't had the ability to get the experience, right? So that's a dangerous game to play. In my estimation, anyways, because I, in, in my business every day, I can't look at somebody that has experience or looks like he has experience because he's older, and that's really what it...
No, it has nothing to do with his age.
I know you say that, but the impression is, you know, the reason he has more experience is because he's older and he's been around the, the game for a while, right? Greg hasn't had that opportunity yet, right? So I don't discount...
That's the way a career is sprung, though, so...
I agree. I, I did like Bob, but I did think Bob was telling us sometimes what we, he thought we wanted to hear. And that's not a bad thing, because I, you know, I want him to say things that we want to hear, right? But that was my only, and not even a reservation, that's how I chose to grade them on that.
Well, that, yeah, so I mean, you know, I had, I had no problem with any of the five people that the, the committee put before us. I think they would all be ex, five excellent choices. You have to narrow them down to your top three. For me, Curtin and Silva are interchangeable in most ways. The only difference is Bob Curtin, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say he has, he has a slight edge in experience, because he was in the news business for his entire life and just recently got into this side of the business.
Five to seven years.
It's not as though he's been, he's an older gentleman coming in with the experience of being in that role forever. He's new to that role. And, you know, he, you know, he did have all the right answers, so to speak. He knew, you know, he knew all the buzzwords, all the things, you know, at times, all the things that we really, we don't appreciate about some of the people that have been closer to us. But, you know, his experience in working in a government, town government situation with Selectmen as opposed to city councils and a mayor and that stuff, yeah, that makes a difference, but, you know, when we start to talk about Linfield being a town as opposed with city, you know, I wouldn't want to, we would sit here as the five of us as a board if, if Andrew came to us with comps, or, or if Cavern came to us with comps and used Linfield as a comp for salaries, for schools, and everything else, because Linfield, if you take Linfield and the town of Maine and put them side by side, and you're going to compare them, there's no comparison in any, any way, if you, the economics, especially on the economic side, with all that Linfield has on Route One, on 128, and all those other places that, you know, if you look at Linfield and what they have for, for business and industry, clearly, there's no comparison to the town of Maine, but I...
Do we want to...
Jason Silva, to me, he, he came in, he was the first guy, you know, and he was, he was vibrant, he was, you know, he was, a lot of the things were like, wow, you know, but he also has some experience with some of the things that we're, you know, we struggle with the most, which is the, the financial end of town and state government, whether it's a town or a city or, but municipal. And I think that that's, that's the biggest piece that we, we need help with. I think that there's, you know, there's good department heads here, there's good people all throughout town, and I'm not saying that anybody sitting in the TA seat hasn't been a good person or good employer or good TA, but now you have, you have an opportunity to have someone come in and learn from, you know, the people that have been here, learn from us what we want as a board, learn from the community what the community wants, and I'm not sure, even though I, I made him a selection, I'm not sure that you're going to teach Robert Curtin the new tricks that you'd be able to teach Jason.
Do we want to, in light of the dialogue, kind of run back down the line with, you know, who our number one is? Given that we've down, you know, off the numbers, we're now looking between Bob and Jason? So I'm just...
Can we be clear on what we're doing here, though? So we're running down to see what our number one is. We're not by default handing the point getter number, the number two slot if our number one doesn't go through for us.
Correct. We're still open. I think, I think if, I think that would might, what would you suggest, Chris?
Well, I think, I think, you know, to Terrence's point, what he was saying, I think that we're all thinking the same thing. If we come to a decision, and if the decision happens to be somebody that either A says no, or B says no because they're taking another job, or for whatever reason declines any offer we might make to any of the people on the board on the table, so to speak, we come back and we start fresh with...
Those remaining.
The remaining, you know, do we start fresh with the remaining four, or do we start fresh with the remaining five? You know, how do we, how do we want to do that? Because we could also, you know, you know, we put Bonnie Biarki back in the mix. And then, you know, given, in light of Andrew's interview and some of the information, some of the things we heard tonight, do we put him, you know, we put him back in and give him more consideration as we move forward?
I think, I would think, based on the...
Because he's at, he's at what? He's at five, Greg Johnson's at six...
Was at six, yeah, it's very close.
You know, maybe you think, you know, you reread the, you reread your, what you thought were highlights of the responses to the questions again, given that there's now a certain different number, and does that elevate one that's not in a position that they're in today?
I would, I think the idea of, you know, if, if we go through to kind of identify who would be our preferred candidate tonight, and then if, for whatever reason, that candidate is not interested or something else happens, then I would say that we continue looking against the other three individuals that were named this evening.
Yeah.
And then decide, based on that, you know, do we have a new preferred pick out of those three?
Okay. The other, the other part of it is that we may select someone, they may want to come, but we may not come to an agreement on contract.
Absolutely.
So we have that to think about, too. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
Is it too late to add it to next week's agenda, just as a backup plan in case we need to discuss?
The, the agenda would need to be posted on Friday.
We're back.
If I have info.
Just as a safety net.
On Friday.
What timing? We can just keep adding it till the loop's closed.
Yeah.
So are we going to make a motion to...
Identify our first.
Identify our number one candidate based on point system here?
Well, I think we want to reassess whether or not, in light of the conversation...
Like, if we change our positions?
Have you changed who your number one candidate is in light of the dialogue, knowing that we're, the new number score off the first round was Jason came in with 11, Bob came in with eight, Greg with six, and Andrew with five? We've had a robust discussion about kind of why we chose who we chose. Does that cause anyone to maybe reassess who they would make their first vote and first choice?
Doesn't make me change. My, my scores are the same.
I would switch to Jason.
Okay.
You said you would switch to Jason?
I would.
Yeah.
I would stick with Jason.
I would remain with Robert.
I think I would stay with Robert in the end. Push him to shove.
So I think that's just...
Jason was up a point, essentially.
Yeah, so, I mean, well, now that it's basically a tie, you've got six, six, and three.
No, Jason gets a point because Melissa Swift, she swapped, she swapped her top pick with her second pick.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
So Jason now goes up to 12 points.
And Greg loses a point.
And Greg loses a point. So Greg's now tied with Andrew for five points, right?
Gotcha. So, yeah, so Jason would be the top pick, then.
So, I mean, do we have a consensus that, is everyone comfortable offering, choosing Jason as our, as our, as our top pick?
I'm comfortable with that.
Is that somebody who'd like to make a motion?
I'm going to read it.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm going to get to that. You want to rush me? All right. So, the motion is move to offer the position of town administrator to Jason Silva, subject negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Melissa, call everybody. Suppose I will.
I'll call Jason.
Yeah, I bet you will.
Hopefully, you won't answer by saying, I just accepted the town of Marlboroughhead's offer.
I Googled it, and nothing's come up yet.
Thank you to everybody who participated in the Town Administrator Search Committee.
Yes, thank you.
I know it was a lot of work, so thank you very much.
Yeah, so although, I don't think that's officially, that's, I don't think that committee's officially disjudged until we actually make...
Yeah, so don't go anywhere.
All these people who say no.
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your ongoing and continued...
Because, right, if everyone says no, we're like, we can't reach a contract. We're like, back to square one.
I'll call Bonnie Biarki. Call. I'm loving this job.
I mean, I think anyone would choose to commute.
Oh, so have we closed then?
We haven't closed the meeting. We're just trying to figure out who we go to call.
Ghostbusters.
Ah. What's that? What'd she say?
Nothing.
We both said Ghostbusters at the same time.
Carry on.
Yeah, okay.
Move to Jared?
Make a motion to Jared.
Second.
Third. So we do have a meeting next Tuesday, and if, you know, obviously, I'll let everyone know what happens and make the phone calls.
We also have a backup meeting on the 26th, by the way.
Yeah.
So if we can't get it posted and done, right, that's...
Yeah. And then...
Thank you.
I guess there's another, there's another conversation we had next, we'll get together, too.